Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, April 1st, 2021 School Committee Meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Robert Mullin.
Good evening. Mike Moran.
Good evening. Mark Branco, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Costucci.
Anthony Tenerella.
Jeff Boe.
Please rise for a bunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with visitors, comments, and questions. See any? I see none. TPS learning model change? Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I thought I would, I think it's important to revisit this slide, given what transpired last week at Tingsboro Elementary School. This was one of our foundational slides. This was the slide that we said that we were committed to since July. Context and data. We're going to use context and data to look at everything and make an informed decision. I'm very proud of the work of this committee and administration because I think we've played it down the middle the entire time. I think we've always leaned on numbers, data, and the context to make appropriate decisions for learning models. It hasn't been clouded out by CNN, Fox, Facebook, anti-political views of anyone. We stayed down the middle and we've leaned on context and data. So to that end, this was our driving foundational slide for the past eight or nine months. The only change that we see now is that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a new mandate. And there's a requirement now that all Massachusetts public school districts must reopen for full in-person students in grades K to 5 by April 5th unless they've received a waiver from DESI. Of course, we're in a position where we never even applied for a waiver from DESI because we were back in person. So again, I think we need to lean on context and data as we think about learning models and as we think about moving forward and doing what's best for our students and staff. You've seen this slide before. This talks, this is the science. This is what is required for safe reopening. It's DESI guidance. It's a crosswalk document that shows DESI guidance, CDC guidance, and TPS and what actually is going on here. And the number one strategy that schools are encouraged is to have layered mitigation strategies within the schools. So what are the layered mitigation strategies? Masks, distancing, hand washing, cleaning, contact tracing, and of course, what's going on in your community for community transmission. If you study this graph and you go all the way across, you will see that the Tingsboro Public Schools are fully in compliant with every layered mitigation strategy as recommended by DESI and CDC. If you look in the right column, I specifically have three strategies highlighted in red. We go above and beyond in every one of those mitigation strategies. We require all students and staff to wear masks. I'm very proud that a lot of school community members here have been in our schools recently and have seen this in action and in effect. Our distancing, both DESI and CDC, are saying three to six feet. We're six by four minimally everywhere. So we exceed the three-feet acceptance by both CDC and DESI. And the third one I want to point out, and I think this is probably the most important one, is the incredible work that our school nurses do in terms of contact tracing. We're fortunate that we have a nurse who is on the Board of Health, who is our lead nurse, Michelle Riley. Our nurses are proactive, they're thorough, and they do everything they possibly can to protect the students and staff of this school. So I think we go above and beyond layered mitigation in three of those specific areas. So where are we today? This is, I put my glasses on, as of 11:19 this morning, and we've received no reports, new reports since then. There are currently 18 active cases in the district, 10 at TES. Just to kind of forecast where we're going in the next several days, we have three cases clearing tomorrow, three cases clearing Saturday, three cases clearing Sunday, and one will be clear by Monday. So we have 10 cases coming off the 18. Now, of course, new cases could arise, but to have three cases drop off in consecutive days generally doesn't happen. So that's a good trend for the district. So we're excited about that. I was able to access this data earlier before the meeting, and this is coming out now publicly, I believe, so I hope I'm not spilling the beans on anything, but Tingsboro, per mass TP parameters, will be in the red this week. We have 60 positive cases, and our positivity rate over the past 14 days is 5.50%. And I think one of the things that we need to recognize here is that just two weeks ago, our community was in the green. The purpose tonight, I believe, is to talk about TES. So I think we need to really dive into TES, understand what transpired, what we did, what actions, steps we took, where we are, and where we're going. So let's go a little bit deeper inside TES here. Before we do that, we have to understand the quarantine day count. So for those who are watching at home and those in the committee who aren't aware, I just want to outline the quarantine day count. This is the work that our nurses do tirelessly to ensure we are following all regulations and guidelines and protecting the students and staff of the district. When a student tests positive, that is day zero for them. They are shedding disease up to 48 hours prior to that. So Ryan could test positive today. If I was within six feet of Ryan for 15 minutes yesterday, yesterday would be my day zero, okay, as a close contact. His would be today because he tested positive, mine would be yesterday. So day zero, that's an important one to understand because that's what starts the clock. When we get to day five, if an individual is asymptomatic, on day five, they can test. Day five, six, and seven, if they test anywhere in that window and the test is negative, on day eight, they can leave quarantine. Now, they still need to monitor their symptoms for the next 14 days, but on day eight, they're Day 11 is important because if a student gets to day 11 and they choose, or a family chooses not to test, if that student or staff member is asymptomatic for 11 days, on day 11 without a test, they can leave quarantine. Again, they still have to monitor until day 14. If at any point after day zero, somebody is symptomatic, they do not leave quarantine until day 15. So these are all the dates and the numbers that our staff, our nurses have to figure out and communicate to families and set timelines and return dates and understand what's going on. It's difficult in that they also need to know if students are testing, what the results are, when those come in. They also need to know if at any point in this window, a student is symptomatic. So there's a lot of communication, a lot of calls that need to happen, and our nurses are doing an incredible job. So let's go into where we were last week. Last Friday, 3/26, at the time, we saw we probably had a handful of cases, and we're going to get to that slide in a minute. But as we look at it, our nurse is doing a phenomenal job of identifying everyone in the school and the district who was positive, everyone who was a close contact in quarantine. So close contact quarantine, we're going to use interchangeably, it's the same. And we also have on our list students that we believe are symptomatic, that we're watching and monitoring because mom called in, they're keeping it home for sick with a sore throat, which is a sign of COVID. So in culmination, on Friday, 3/26, our numbers were escalating, and it got to the point on Friday, March 26, we had 108 staff and students that were either positive, in quarantine, or symptomatic. That's what forced the decision to go remote this week, that number, not in isolation. Let me rephrase that. That number is one of many factors that forced us to go in isolation this week. That's one factor. So let's look specifically at that number. As of today, that 108 is down to 58. We're projecting by Monday, that'll be down to 22. So we're trending in a great direction there. Here's another important slide. You can see on March 18, there were zero active cases at TES. On March 19, we had our first case in a specific classroom. March 20, we had no new cases, so we still had one active case. Those aren't active cases per day, that's the running total, okay? When it got to March 24, Wednesday, March 24, we realized that one of the contacts, one of the close contacts, presumed close contacts from school had tested positive. So at that point, on Wednesday, March 24, we had a presumed in-school transmission. So Wednesday morning, we made the immediate decision to send that class home. So those kids all went home in quarantine. That was on Wednesday, the 24th. On Thursday, the 25th, after school hours, we learned of another student in that class that had tested positive as well. So Thursday afternoon after school. Friday morning, and you can see the numbers are starting to trend up there, Friday morning, the 26th, Central Administration had a meeting with members of the Board of Health and health agent, and we discussed the numbers, we discussed the close contacts, we discussed the kids that were symptomatic, and we had conversations about what had taken place in the school and what had taken place in the community. Sports were going on, we just had a weekend with two 60-degree days, there were gatherings. And at that point, we said, this looks like it could spread a little bit. We need to be cautious and we need to move to remote learning. So the decision was made Friday morning, March 26, to shut down the elementary school and go fully remote for one week to let the 10 days pass and give everyone opportunity to clear. So you can see this week, beginning on Monday, the 28th, we're at nine positive cases, up to 10, one fell off, back to nine, then we go back up to 11. That's a lot of positive cases. Now, the close contacts that would have been associated with those cases would have been through the roof. So that's where we were till today, where we're at 10 cases on April 1st. As we look at cases falling off, you can see down below, the projected active cases at TES. Tomorrow, two cases fall off. The next day, three cases fall off, then one case, then one case. So we project that from Monday, April 5, there'll be three active cases at TES. Another piece of contextual information that you need to know is off to the right. Of all those close contacts, 108 close contacts in TES and siblings in the middle school and high school in the community, we had four people test positive in total. So that's where we are. The numbers we saw tick up, we responded, not just based on this one piece of information, based on contextual information in the community and the number of close contacts. And now we think this week, we can see those numbers are as high as they've been, and they're starting to fall off.
Dr. Flanagan, before we go to the next slide, just a quick question on that last one.
Sure.
It was on the 15th that we had the elementary school go completely back in right through the fifth grade.
Yes.
And then we saw, so day five is really the 19th, and we start to see the one, and then we start to continue to see a trend up. Where we've been remote this week and we're seeing the trend back down, is there concern that, especially where we had an in-school transmission, that once we're back in school, five days in, we'll start to see that number tick up again?
There's a concern every day. There's concern every day, every school. We live this and we monitor it every day, all day. So, you know, I think when I get to some of the latest slides, we can have that conversation. But, you know, we're watching this, we're monitoring this, and I think it's part of the reality that we're seeing in the community. You know, we saw our community jump up from green to red in a two-week period, you know? So if I can continue, we'll get to that. Does that work?
Absolutely.
Okay. So let's look at, we get to 22, 22 potential close contacts from Monday at TES. What does that look like contextually in the district? So we can see that TMS last Friday was eight, the number was pretty low. You see, the number jumped to 32 this week. So there was certainly some early activity this week at TMS. THS has been up around the 30s, you know, for weeks. So 32 to 25 to 16 projected from Monday for THS. What I'll say is this, we had a student, we had one student with over 20 close contacts, and one close contact was in school. What we're primarily seeing on the Norris Road campus is close contacts are happening outside of the school district. Tomorrow, tomorrow, we're going to add to our dashboard. We're going to put a close contact running moment in time on our dashboard. It's not going to be a summation or summary of the week. What we're going to do is between 11 and 12 o'clock or at some point on a Friday, we're going to take a snapshot of where we are and put that up and keep that weekly running record, just as another contextual data point for parents to understand what close contacts are looking like in the school. You know, we want parents to have as much information as possible as they're making decisions. I think, you know, we're very, very proud of our dashboard. We think it's as transparent as anyone out there. So the information is out there, and we want to continue to keep parents abreast so that they know and they can make the best decisions for their students. And we want our staff to know. You know, if our staff's getting concerned, we certainly want to support them as well. So that will go out effective tomorrow. You'll see a new close contact tab on our TPS COVID-19 page. So as we start to think about the town of Tingsboro in context, and we see the data, we see the numbers are going in the right direction, but, you know, we need to think about context. Certainly, outside activities have been impactful on our close contact numbers. Norris Road campus, as I said earlier, majority of those close contacts are not happening in school, they're occurring outside of school. Recently, we've seen an uptick in remote learners who are testing positive, which is reflective of the trend in our community. As a community, we know that U-Sports is playing, Sullivan Farms is open, Skate 3 is open, Sports Center, Pheasant Lane Mall, kids are gathering. Kids are gathering. Contact tracing, I want to speak to this for a minute. Our school nurses are working hard, very hard, and the information that we use to make decisions is only as good as the information that's provided to us. And I think it's troublesome when we hear that families aren't fully responsive or fully open, or some are just flat-out refusing to provide any detailed information to our nurses. So that's problematic. So we need our community and our parents, if we want to protect this learning model, we've got to be as open and forthright as possible so that we can do due diligence and make sure that we're keeping all of our students and staff as safe as possible. So we know what's going on in our town. Public schools, we have DESI guidance, clear expectations, the K-5 schools will be in-person on Monday. Remote learning still, still remains an option, and those kids can come in and out of remote learning at any point. Our mitigation strategies are in place, they're enforced, they're reviewed, they're enhanced. Our schools do a great job of mitigation. Our numbers are trending in the right direction, specifically at the elementary school, which you saw. We focused a great deal of attention on the social-emotional needs of our students, of our staff. We know, I mean, I've received less than a dozen, but, you know, near a dozen emails from parents over the past couple of days, and I appreciate their insight, I appreciate their perspective. They're insightful, they're thoughtful in their writing, and most all of them want what's best for kids. So thank you for all those parents for the feedback that you've provided. So the general sense of those parents is we need our kids back in school because they're concerned about the social-emotional needs of our kids. So to that end, you know, as I stated to the committee last Saturday, you know, my intent was to watch these numbers and really understand it and understand the context all week long. I've done that. I've done that. I know that there is no 100% guarantee, there's no 100% mitigation. Anyway, we're not going to have zero risk ever. But given everything I've seen, my intent was to send a letter on tomorrow, which is already drafted on my desktop, that would announce that we're going to reopen the schools on Monday, given the fact of where we are with the data that we know and the context that it's in. So that was going to be my recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee has at this point, and we can certainly have dialogue.
A question for you, Dr. Flanagan.
Sure.
Do you know what percentage of classrooms at TES are six by four rather than six by six?
Effective Monday, 100% will be six by six.
Prior to?
Three.
Okay. So obviously, it's unfortunate when you have in-school transmission.
Yep.
TES would have been the last place we expected to see it.
Yep.
So it's actually surprising that it showed up there. So effective Monday, every class will be six by six?
Yes.
Okay.
At TES. They're also reviewing recess policies, they're reviewing all mask breaks, policies.
Mask breaks, hallways, yeah, off-traffic in the hallways.
Yep.
Lunch distribution.
Now, oh, that'd be a good question. With the buses, what is the reality of what's on the buses? I know, you know, we've talked about, you know, you know, that it is open to everybody now, but what's the reality of how many people are being on the bus?
Yeah, that's a great point, so thank you for that. So in the letter that I drafted that was going to go out tomorrow, one of the things that we were going to do a whole section dedicated to transportation, you know, I'm not sure parents are fully aware that on a bus, a positive student could potentially impact up to 10 to 15 students as a close contact. So I will implore parents to please drive your kids to school if you can, to limit all potential contacts, just as another layer of mitigation. So, you know, we've talked about that here at this table. I don't know if that's gotten out enough, so that was going to be part of the letter. And the other thing that we're going to do is we're going to take a diagram that shows how many kids are impacted by two kids, an aisle seat and a window seat, and get that on our homepage tomorrow, just so parents can, just as another resource. If you want to understand, click on this and see what one kid can do on a bus to impact those around them.
But even though we know that the buses have a lot of airflow in them, so...
20 to 40 air exchanges on a bus.
But it doesn't matter with close contacts, with the way that TES has written the close contact, doesn't matter.
Correct.
It's still going to be, yeah.
Correct. I think, you know, and the other side of that is, you know, at TES, just every student on every bus is going to be a close contact. It takes the buses a long time to get out of that driveway, to get onto the Westford Road, there are traffic lights, so we have to err on the side of caution. So we're calling each ride at least seven minutes. So every bus route at TES, kids are going to be in close contact if they're close.
Yeah.
So that's problematic. You know, there is talk at DESI that there potentially may be a shift at some point by the CDC to go to close contact as three feet. That would certainly be helpful.
Yeah.
But right now, we're not there. And as we've said since day one, we're going to follow CDC and DESI guidance and go from there, so.
Well, that's actually a proactive way for parents to be if they don't want to have to have their child quarantined because of a close contact, having them not take the bus would definitely certainly help that.
It's certainly limits numbers.
Dr. Flanagan, looking at Tingsboro as a school community and looking at the numbers of some of the neighboring communities that are in Massachusetts, not looking at Nashville or Hudson, just looking at the positivities that are based off of the public school pages from different towns like Drakeett, Westford, Chelmsford, Groton, Dunstable, Tingsboro as a population, just doing a percentage of the school community to their positives, is trending two to three times higher than those communities. Is that something that, you know, with the community spread and with the actions of the community, what are things that we can be doing to try to help mitigate that? And maybe if there's anything we can do as a school community, as a school community that would try to bring this down? Because it's, from just looking at those numbers, it's alarming that a district as small as Tingsboro could be triple those, some of these other school systems.
Yeah, so really, you're speaking of statistics that I've not seen, nor do I know about. So you're asking me what I think we can do as a school community? I think we do it. We have mitigation strategies in place. Our kids are here, they're wearing their masks seven hours a day. They're being told to wear their masks, they're being told to stand six feet apart. So we're doing everything we can as a school community, as a school community. Beyond the school day?
Yes, yeah.
Beyond the school day, I don't have authority to tell parents to not send their kids to sports, to not tell their kids to wear masks. And that's, that's beyond my scope. We're doing everything we can within our schools to keep our schools open and safe and to protect our kids. You know, I encourage families to please do everything you can to protect our learning model, knowing that it is fragile, and to please, you know, limit gatherings and I'm doing, so essentially, Jeff, everything we've been doing since July, we've been messaging it out, we've been putting it out there in the community. I think now that we've seen an impact on the schools, I'm hopeful that people recognize that it really is a fragile model, that we need to do everything we can. But beyond that, I mean, it's my job as Superintendent of Education to really take care of the schools, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Dr. Flanagan, there's also one other thing you have to think about, Mr. Boe, when you're comparing percentages, you're comparing percentages of a school district that's fully in-person to all school districts that are not. You just named all of our districts around us, and none of them are back full in person yet. So the percentages, it's much easier in Chelmsford where they only have a third of their kids in schools are two days a week. My son goes for two days a week for half-days right now. That's his entire in-school experience, Monday, Tuesday, three and a half hours. That's it. So his percentages and his close contacts are way down percentage-wise. So in a week to two weeks, you know, while we reap the rewards of positivity of being the first district back in the area, and we were proud of our work, we also have a little blip because we're the first ones back. I would suspect we're going to see that kind of uptick surround us as well. But right now, it's tough to compare percentages in a district that's fully in-person to those that aren't.
I think it was just an unfortunate set of circumstances at the elementary school. We didn't see the same thing happen at the middle school or the high school where the classrooms are tighter, students are closer. I imagine you actually have more contact outside the school with those populations, especially the high school where they can drive. So the fact that it happened at the elementary school is the last thing I would have expected. I think it was just, I think it's an anomaly and it's unfortunate, but I don't expect it to happen again either.
Brian, if I may. I just, Dr. Flanagan, I appreciate that you're planning to put out there the close contact numbers. I think that's really helpful for the community to be able to see just a little bit more of what's going on. And one of the things you said is that, you know, it can help families make the decision that's best for them. We talk a lot about, in all of these meetings, it's said multiple times that the remote option's always there, and I appreciate that Tingsboro has held that sacred as an option for our students. Can you talk a little bit more how that would work at the elementary school if a family chose to go remote? Because I think there's just a little bit of fear in some of the families at the elementary school about making that choice.
In terms of going to a remote teacher?
Yeah, yeah.
So they'd be assigned to a remote classroom teacher, yes?
So if they chose to go remote for two or three weeks because they felt nervous about the numbers, or whatever their situation was, they moved to a remote teacher and then they would move back to their other teacher?
I think, yeah, we put that out to the community. They understand what the requirements are. So if they wanted to select remote for the rest of the year, they would be reassigned to a remote teacher. You know, you can't go one week in and out. You need to make a decision here for the last two months of school at some point. But the concurrent model certainly wouldn't be the option, they'd be reassigned to a remote teacher.
Okay.
Right, because there's also cost implications on having to hire X amount of teachers to accommodate.
Yeah, it was a strategic decision we made. We said we want to get away from concurrent teaching at the elementary school, so we brought in a remote teacher so that our in-person teachers could focus on in-person instruction.
I bet you have 40 kids who decide to opt out for remote for the rest of the year.
Then we hire another remote teacher.
A requirement to hire more, so there's budget implications there too, so.
Yep.
Which, it may be money, free money from federal, but whatever.
Yep, no, absolutely.
So where are the requirements, I'm sorry, I need to check, where are the requirements for that, going to remote? Are they written somewhere?
Just contact the billing principal.
Oh, okay.
Yep, just contact billing principal.
So if somebody can't just say, oh, things, the numbers are going up, I'm just going to go for two weeks?
Right.
It's not back and forth.
Okay.
I think what I heard Dr. Flanagan say.
And I know there's a lot of concern about students transitioning to a dedicated remote teacher. I haven't heard a lot of feedback, but I had a mom reach out to me this week, and she said she was very nervous, but it actually turned out to be the best thing for her child. Her child is very anxious about it, but it's, they're very happy with the decision. They appreciate the remote-only teacher, and it's been a positive experience for them.
Yeah, I think when Jeff and Becky came through the tours, I think that's one of the things we heard Mrs. Kavanaugh say, that the dedicated teacher on the remote side was a better experience for the remote learners, so.
Mr. Mullin?
Well, I appreciate the email that Dr. Flanagan is planning on putting out tomorrow. That type of communication doesn't... That type of communication doesn't give the same amount of information, doesn't convey all of the thoughts and feelings of everyone in this room, as well as having a meeting here and talking about it and having this in front of the residents and the parents in this town. That is why I pushed to have this meeting tonight. People have questions out there. They're concerned. I am concerned with them. I appreciate their feelings. We all also got those letters from the parents who wanted their kids back in school, and I greatly appreciate that. First off, I did not ask for this meeting to have a vote on changing our educational model. I asked for this meeting to make sure that we are getting all of this information out to the residents of this town first from us, okay? There's a lot of communication going out on social media that doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily true. One email from all of us, again, like I said, doesn't convey the amount of information that we're able to get to the, to get to people as we can in this meeting. I greatly appreciate your flexibility in having this this evening. What I wanted parents to be able to hear was why it was safe to send their kids back to school next week, okay? I think you've done a great job at that. I agree with going back and having it full-time next week. But, again, I wanted the people in this town to know that this school committee cares about their thoughts, cares about their worries, and that we're all working together to make sure that their kids are safe in the schools, right? Something happened that caused this. We know it wasn't necessarily in the school, okay? We're pretty, we pretty much know that it didn't. Parents need to be more careful, they need to be more mindful about where they bring their kids, about how they let them interact with others, how parents themselves interact with others. We don't want this to happen again. We want the kids in full-time for the rest of the year. This is just what can happen if you're not careful. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Moran?
If I could just make a suggestion to Dr. Flanagan, and is possible or not, or to make sure Mr. Mullen's voice is heard as well as the committee's for the community. I know it's a 6:00 p.m. meeting, and maybe not everybody's home from work if they have to work or whatever. Is there a possible way to maybe just encourage people to go to the town website where this meeting is recorded and watch it?
It's on our website as well. And I could put a link.
I'm just making, making it aware, and maybe not everybody has access to a computer and, or whatever, but, you know, maybe if they have a phone, they can come watch it on a mobile phone, just so they can get your discussion again and say, "Hey, we had a meeting, if you missed it, here's the conversation, read it, digest it, here's more information on the website, here's more information in the email. I think you're doing a fantastic, superb, awesome job of communicating. I think it's a stellar performance from the administration of communication out to the community." I mean, oh my gosh, I get another email, I get another update. I can be responsible and check myself if I want to go to the website. So, I think the burden is on parents to, you know, be responsible for kids if they're sick in any manner, and it's also the responsibility of us to communicate what's going on. And, you know, I understand Mr. Mullen's concerns. I'm concerned about the health and well-being and mental health of students as well, but anything to over-communicate, so if they want to watch the video, they certainly can.
Have you put it on the link?
I hope that helps too, if you weren't on that. That was perfect, thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to echo their comments, but I'd also like to point out that what you did last Friday was part of our strategy, it was part of the plan, and it worked. It truly worked. So, you and your staff, the administration, the school committee, we approved how we were going to do this, and we're following it.
Yes.
And it's working. So, thank you to your staff. Thank you to the nurses, again, you pointed them out, we have to keep repeating that. To the parents at home, thank the nurses when you see them or if you call. I think it's also important for our parents at home. I'm the first one to tell you that I want our kids on the baseball field, on the soccer field, on the basketball field. I want them playing in the backyard, I want them being kids. I want our staff to live their lives, but know that there are consequences to that and that these things are going to happen. 108 contact tracings, that number looks horrible, but one child on a soccer team affects 20 other kids. That makes that number look so much worse than I believe it really is. So, be careful. If your child is sick, if your child has a cold, a sore throat in the morning, please keep them home. It's so important, especially this time of year, allergies, everything else, that one child could affect so many other children, positive or not, just the contact tracing alone. Please keep your children home.
If you're sick.
If you're sick, yes.
Tony, to that point, you know, we talk a lot about the social-emotional well-being of our students, and there is another social-emotional well-being aspect of this, that all these contact or close-contact students, they're going through a roller coaster as well.
Yes.
So, they're pulled down to the principal's office not knowing why and sent home for a week and, you know, having a swab shoved up their nose potentially. So, it is, it creates other emotions for students as well. So, again, just as Tony was saying, if you're not feeling well, if you think you might not be feeling well, follow the protocols. The schools put out, you know, guidelines, kind of a checklist that you should all be checking every morning, making sure, you know, you don't have a fever and you don't have these other symptoms before you go to school.
So, operational question on that. If a parent keeps a child home because, you know, they have the sniffles, they say, "All right, my child's going to go remote today," does that go in as an unexcused remote day?
If the child stays home because they're sick, they're sick.
Okay.
So, if, and it depends on the grade level. You know, if I'm an eighth grader and I'm not feeling great and my parents keep me home, there's the opportunity for me to log into my classroom if it's concurrently being instructed at that point. That doesn't happen K-4 because we have dedicated teachers. So, it's not like we can jump into the remote learning environment, so if a child's sick...
For those who can, who do have that concurrent option?
They can log in.
Does that count as an absence for those?
No, they'd be remotely present, RP.
Okay.
You know, I think that's a huge point. I think, you know, my nurses would yell at me tomorrow if I didn't reinforce that. We're seeing kids come to school that are symptomatic. Parents need to keep them home. You need to err on the side of caution because you're putting other kids at risk. You wouldn't want your own kid put at risk, please don't put another student at risk. You know, it's impactful and, you know, it's something we all have to do as a community. We have to come together as a community on this and say, "We're all going to do what's best for the greater good." I don't mean to preach or lecture, but I'm sitting here as a parent as well, and I don't want my daughter put in jeopardy because somebody said, "Just go ahead to school." Nor do I want to put anyone else's kids in jeopardy by sending my own daughter to school. You know, I live this with you, I understand, I have this perspective. My daughter walks these halls. So, you know, I'm asking the entire community, let's all do what we need to do to keep this fragile model protected so we can get our kids back. There's nothing, nothing better for our kids than being in-person. To a person here as a parent, we saw it when our kids were back in school, they were different kids when they came back five days a week. We need to protect that. That was very preachy, I apologize.
Thank you.
Sometimes you have to go there.
Do you have any final?
I have one more question, yeah. I don't know if you keep this data, but I'm just curious, do you know how many, what percentage of our staff has been vaccinated?
I do, but I can't drill down to that level. Oh, have they been vaccinated?
Vaccinated.
Sorry.
Just curious.
So, we did put out a communication to all staff, we were going to assist them in seeking vaccine appointments.
Yep.
And 85% of the staff, roughly 85%, said they did not need our assistance because they had taken care of it themselves.
That's a good deal.
Doesn't mean they all got it.
Right.
Maybe some are choosing not to, but 85% weren't looking for assistance, so that's a good sign.
That's a good number, huh?
It's a very good.
That's a beat. Hi, beat.
Yeah.
It might give a little people a little bit more peace of mind.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay, so, I don't think we actually have anything to vote on. We didn't change the learning model, so there's no vote to change it back. But you're, so basically, you're announcing now, Dr. Flanagan, that TES will reopen Monday?
My letter's coming tomorrow. Yes, we'll be back in person on Monday, but I do encourage people to read the letter. It'll have a link to this meeting, it'll have a link to the diagram on what bus close contacts looked like. And again, please, if you're interested, go to our summary page tomorrow and look for the new close contact tab, just so you can get a snapshot on time and see what it looks like tomorrow on a Friday. But, and I also encourage parents, if you have questions, if you want to know a little bit more information, if I can give it to you, I will. You just need to reach out. You know, we all want what's best for Tingsborough, and, you know, let's work together and make this next couple of months be the best we can for the kids.
Yes. All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Well, no.
No?
Can we do a school committee discussion first, please?
No.
We just had one.
It's not on the agenda.
It is, it is. School committee discussion, just a moment.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank the hard work of the nurses, I applaud them, very awesome people, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Just, I am glad that the students are going back next week, and, you know, I know that it's something that maybe some people may have the impression that I was hoping we were going to go remote, and that's absolutely not the case. I want them back, I want to see them back. You know, there's, naturally, I think there are questions, there are concerns that come up from around our community, and, you know, I think this is an excellent forum when we had to make that move, and Dr. Flanagan, I think you did the right thing with having a circuit breaker to make sure that we didn't lose the model, it didn't spiral out of control. So, I thank you for that. You know, and I just would ask parents to just be mindful in your actions at home, because as Dr. Flanagan puts it, the model's fragile. And if we're concerned about the social-emotional, which I think we all are as parents in the community and community members, you know, going from full-in-person to having to go to remote to back and forth, going back and forth is probably worse. And we really want to be able to have the kids in school, we want to be able to have those milestone celebrations, and that's all being put at jeopardy by outside actions. I just hope that everyone can just be more mindful going forward.
I'll throw out the thank you to the nurses again, because I think we can't say it enough. To our building principals, to our teachers, thank you for doing what you do every day. Thank you for teaching our children and coming back and working with the administration and us. So, thank you to them. And to Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branko, thank you guys for everything you do every day. We, as a committee, know what you put in, because, you know, we see it. So, thank you all.
I'll biddle that, thank you.
And also, thank you.
Thank you for your support, I appreciate it, and, you know, let's continue to work together as a community. Thank you.
I'll echo everybody's thoughts on the nurses. I'll also add that they don't come in and leave with the school day, they're doing contact tracing seven days a week, all hours of the day. So, they're on it 24/7. I don't know if people really appreciate how many hours they're putting in. They don't punch out at 3:00 and the school day is over. They're working a million hours a week, so we really can't say thank you enough.